We are ready, sir.
Okay, I'd like to call the regular or the special meeting of the town council. Rule call, please.
Councillor Schoen, Councillor Mellon, Councillor Tulowitzki, Councillor Kulturitis, Councillor Gardner.
Present. You can all stand for moments of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to read a proclamation of the town council. Whereas the American Cancer Society confirms that ovarian cancer is a leading cause of death in women more than any other cancer of the female reproductive system with over 21,000 detections and approximately 14,000 deaths each year. Whereas typical women who are middle aged or older who have a family history of ovarian or breast cancer or have had certain cancers in the past are at an increased risk of developing ovarian cancer. And whereas in case, in cases where ovarian cancer is found and treated in early stages, the five-year survival rate is approximately 90%, with early detection and treatment often meaning the difference between life and death. And whereas because ovarian cancer often goes undetected until advanced stages, increasing awareness of risk factors is critical to the fighting of this disease. And whereas it is absolutely essential that women know the risk factors associated with this disease. So this public awareness campaign strives to increase knowledge about this disease and recognition of the facts that the best defensive against ovarian cancer is early detection. And whereas the month of September is dedicated to bolstering ovarian cancer prevention and awareness and taking action to lessen the tragic toll this devastating disease takes on families across our country. While we honor those we have lost and continue to show our support for women who courageously fight on. Now therefore, I Chuck Gardner, President of Munster Town Council of Munster, do hereby proclaim September to be ovarian cancer awareness month in Munster and urge all residents to educate themselves on all information and preventative efforts in the fight to treat and eventually eradicate this disease.
Mr. President, I will leave out this proclamation.
There's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed and dated this day, September 6th, 2022.
For the record, let me add that the vote was five to zero. Councillor Schoen is now here. And just as a side note, with any luck, the Atlas will be lit until beginning tonight until the next council meeting.
Very good, thank you. We move on to the public comments, comment section of the meeting. We kindly ask that in-person public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes for a group spokesman. And that we, that you please keep your comments civil and constructive to public policy issues. Public comments may also be submitted electronically. If you have comments about an item on the agenda that you would like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please enter that question or comment to the town manager Dustin Anderson at danderson@munster.org. Is there any public here which make comments? Just as I say, you state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Jack Delu, E E, capital L, E E, U W. Address is 745 Blue Jay Way, Dyer, Indiana, 46311. Council, like I said, my name is Jack Delu. I'm the current president of Munster Fraternal Order of Police Life 147. I'm representing some of our members here tonight. We constructed a letter we, I'd like to read. With the introduction of COVID-19, Munster police officers and other essential employees were placed on the front line. They were required to continue providing services for the community during a time of uncertainty. While continuing to function during a worldwide health crisis, destructive riots and protests that affected police departments across our nation, including our own. Officers of the Munster Police Department worked tirelessly to ensure the safety of the citizens of the town of Munster, placing them in situations where their health could be compromised and also their safety. Officers continued to operate under the unknown threat posed by COVID-19. COVID-19 has had a tremendous impact on municipalities throughout the country, including Lake County and the town of Munster was not immune from it. Which is why in March of 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 was signed into law to assist state and local governments with $350 billion in additional funding. Eligible uses of these funds include revenue replacements for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to the revenues collected in the most fiscal year prior to the emergency. COVID-19 expenditures or negative economic impacts of COVID-19, including assistance to small businesses, households, and hard hit industries and economic recovery, premium pay for essential workers and investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The town of Munster has received or is estimated to receive an estimated $5,074,463.62, according to Town Ordinance 1839. Plan for American Recovery Plan funds. The town has allocated $500,000 to the town's park department for loss of revenue, 1.1 million for the purchase of a new fire engine in the town's fire department, and 2.5 million for the, for water infrastructure improvements. This leaves the town with an estimated balance of $984,067.34 not currently allocated. Municipalities throughout the region have used these funds as they deemed appropriate for their needs. A common trend in the region and throughout the country are funds from the American Rescue Plan Act being used to provide premium pay and bonuses to their government employees. Some examples in Lake County include, for actually, Lake County each employee received $1,000. The towns of Shererville and Highland, each employee received $2,000. And also, 2,000, the town of Highland included an extra $1,000 for every employee that was vaccinated. So those of you got in Highland that got vaccinated, they got $2,000 plus $1,000. The city of Crown Point, town of Lowell, their employees received $3,000. The city of East Chicago, their employees received $3,500. The city of Holbert, town of Marano, their employees each received $4,500. In the city of Gary, each police officer received $25,000. Each of these municipalities has their reasons for giving these bonuses to their employees. But most have cited their, their appreciation to the employees that were deemed essential and continue to be on the front line during a difficult time in the nation's history. With that being said, the member, the members of the Munster Fraternal Order of Police Life 147 ask you, the members of this town council, does the town of Munster plan to allocate any of the remaining balance of the funds from the American Rescue Plan Act to provide premium pay or bonuses to the essential employees of the town of Munster? Specifically, the officers of the Munster Police.
Those are your full comments?
Over my full. I ended with a question. Will the members allocate any of the remaining funds toward the bones?
Quite frankly, you can ask the question, I would be happy to answer it after I can review some of the other information that you listed. And also the specific nature that I don't think I want to get into a policy issue, answering a policy question right now without the five members of other, my other council members being, being, you know, discussed.
Okay.
Good. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, oh, yes, Jim Casper.
Sorry, I was a little late. Jim Casper addresses 8021 KOY, K O O Y, K O Y, in Munster. This is in regard to the purchase of the snowplow, the truck and the farm. And I noticed that the purchase decision, the recommendation part of the recommendation based upon the purchase price and the equipment that comes with it price. I was wondering if there's any additional work that was done in terms of estimating the total cost of operating each one of the vehicles for its lifetime? Just, just, just an inquiry type of open. Into the recommendation of this vehicle.
Again, it's something that we could, we could ask our public works director during this information or if he's not online, we can find out that information.
So when you say the cost of operating is that like lifetime projected maintenance, fuel costs?
Again.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Is that, you know, lifetime maintenance, projected maintenance costs, projected fuel costs, things like that?
Yes, because it's, well, it's, it's part of the five-year capital. Okay, yeah, over that period of time. What is, what caught my eye was that before it's a diesel, it's gasoline. And I just went online here this afternoon and just like, if you look at six sites, three for the diesel or gasoline, pre-baited gas, I have diesel and all this stuff. So I just wondered if you had any in-house basic decision on it. That's all I'm just saying.
Sure, I can answer that off, off the cuff. We don't look at lifetime maintenance costs, we, we scope a piece of equipment out based on what's needed. For example, the police department scoped out a particular kind of vehicle. We meet that spec and it's the vehicle that they need to do their job, right? Public Works has certain needs for these trucks, depending on what division, what use it's going to be. We scope out for the outcome that you want and then you get the, the vehicle back, right? You can, you can scope it as narrowly or as widely as you want. And if I was a, you know, if I was a mechanic or a mechanical engineer, I'd probably have deep, really strong opinions on gas versus diesel. And I'm sure Russ Kazirah probably has some opinions, but Russ is involved in the scoping of these vehicles and he's the lead maintenance. And if, quite frankly, if Russ and Steve and Chris and Jim and that crew are comfortable with the equipment that they're asking for, then I'm going to defer to their expertise on the matter.
Understandable, and I, Mr. Casper, if you have more questions after, we can answer those questions or get that information from public works department. Any other comments, public comments?
There is one from a resident online, so looks like it's Michael. If you could unmute yourself, you now have the floor.
Great, thanks. So I wanted to ask a, or ask or just comment on the difference between town council meetings and some of the other meetings that I attend. And just the difference regarding the public comments. You know, in the other meetings that I go to, the discussion, the public discussion for each, you know, basically the, the new business portion, each, each item, there's a public comments accepted after each, each new item that's brought up during the meeting. I noticed that town council meetings, they, they don't do that. They, they seem to have all the comments beforehand, before we hear, you know, the opinion of the council, before we hear any of the discussion, before anything is really talked about. And last month I noticed a gentleman who after the council had talked for a little bit about, you know, whatever the subject was, I don't even really remember. He kind of had a question, you know, regarding what the, the council, where it was, where it was heading. And but, but unfortunately, the, the ship had sailed. The public's, public comments portion of the meeting was expired and it left him no recourse at that point to, to voice his opinion other than after the meeting. So it almost seems to me, and, and, you know, I, I attend more of the, the other meetings than I do the town council meetings, but it almost seems to me to me, it's like the, the card is before the horse. You know, the, we, we could ask all the questions or, or bring up all the suggestions or, or comment all we want, but sometimes it might be pointless. Maybe, maybe the, the things that are going to be said are exactly what we need to hear. But if we're not able to comment afterwards, like, why would we wait to find out? You know, we could get up here for two minutes and rail against something and you guys could all be sitting there thinking, it's the same page, we're all on the same page here, but, you know. Anyway, I just, I was wondering if, you know, you could think about maybe making the change to follow the, the, the way that the others, you know, the BZA and some of the other committees run their meetings. Thanks.
Mr. Russell, I think Mr. Russell is going to answer this question. However, I just want to, we have the name and address, this, this gentleman.
Yeah, Michael Gafford, 10380 Oxford Place.
There's, thank you. They, they are, he's going to ask the question.
So I think what Mr. Gafford is referring to is a little bit nuanced. It's a difference between a public meeting and a public hearing. So when you go to a planning commissioner or BZA meeting, those meetings are public meetings. But each item is a public hearing where statutorily, the public has the right to speak on those items at the public hearing. So typically you have a presentation, you have some questions from the commission or the BZA, and then you open the public hearing, it gets closed, there's further questions from the, from the board, and then there's a vote. When there is no public hearing and it's just a public meeting, under the law, the public has the right to observe and record a public meeting. The fact that, you know, public comment is allowed is, is a matter of historical courtesy in the town of Munster as well as other municipalities. There's no right to public comment, no legal right to public comment at a public meeting. There is at a public hearing, but not a public meeting. So Munster has chosen historically to allow the public comment to be held prior to the agenda and getting into the agenda items, that way the public can comment on things that are coming up for a vote, right? Some municipalities have chosen to not allow public comment at all. And some have said, all right, we'll have public comment, we'll have it at the end of the meeting. Well, if you have it at the end of the meeting, the vote's already taken and, and so folks get understandably discouraged because now I'm commenting when you've already taken your vote. So I think the distinction though, between the other bodies like planning commission and BZA is those are public hearings statutorily that there's an order that has to be followed. Where a regular council meeting or even a special council meeting, those aren't public hearings, they're public meetings. So allowing that, that comment, and I think it's a good practice to allow it at the beginning of the meeting because then folks who can look at the agenda can, can express their thoughts before you vote.
Any other counselors like to address a question? I, I concur with Mr. Russell.
Just to add the fact that our agenda is on the meeting and is on the web ahead of time along with memos from staff as to what's being proposed so that every member of the community can know that in advance. And if you have a question, then we have, before we vote on it, you have a chance to, to speak. I do belong to an organization that I've been appointed to by this council that has its meetings, its public comment at the end of the meeting. And I have twice voiced my suggestion that we move it towards the front because we want to know what public comment is before we vote instead of after. But that organization has not chosen to change.
Very good, any other comments?
The only other thing I would add to what Ken said is what we see in order to make our decisions and our votes is the same thing that's published online for all members of the community to review.
Very good, any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda. Wishes of the council.
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. There is no old business, first item under new businesses ordinance 1876, which is the amendment number four to the salary ordinance. There is a memo in front of you from Tom Manager Anderson. Is there any additional information we want to pass along with this or with the fire chief? Present. Okay. There is a recommendation from the staff. And this is an ordinance that we are seeing for the first time, so this is a first reading.
Mr. President, I propose to hear ordinance 1876 on first reading as presented in schedule 64 on September 19.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Very good, seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Item number B is the memo for letter of engagement for the fixed assets. There's a memo from Quirk Treasure Miss. Anything additionally we want to add to it?
I do not, this is an annual engagement that we have and we believe that if not next year and the following year, it will be eliminated with the advantages that we have now with our new software.
I move we confirm the letter of engagement with Peter Consulting Services, the amount up to $4,000.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Letter C, alley repaving, or repaving, change order number one. Deputy Tom Manager, Deet Tomaso, would you like to add anything to the memo? It's pretty self-explanatory.
Self-explanatory, it's a good change order and that it's negative.
Very good, wishes of the council.
Mr. President, I move to approve change order number one to decrease the final contract amount for the 2022 alley reviving project by $14,202,000 cents to $344,790.
Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Then we move on to the 2022 alley repaving. This is pay application number three, which is the final release of retainage. This project's been completed. Deputy Tom Manager, Deet Tomaso, anything else to add? Okay.
Mr. President, I move to approve application payment number three to release, release the retainage to Milestone North Contractors in the amount of $34,479.
I'll second that, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Letter E, Public Works, the purchase of the new 2022 Ford 250. There is a memo in the bid documents are in the board packet. Is there anything else? Is Director of Public Works Steve Gunti online?
He is.
Is there anything else you would like to add?
No, I don't have anything else, thank you for considering this item tonight.
There is a recommendation in the memo for council?
We approve 2022 dump truck utility bed for net price after trade-in of $59,189 for those that are four to replace unit 318 payable as a number one, $42,202 for, and two, $16,987 WA charge.
Very good, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to letter F, this is the Public Works, public purchase of the new 2024 dump truck for the Street Division. Anything else to add, Mr. Gunti?
There's nothing to add unless you have questions, thank you.
Very good, there is a staff recommendation in the memo?
Oh, Mr. President, I will move to approve purchase of one 2024 HDB607 international dump truck with plow and salt spreader to replace unit 335 for net price after trade-in of $222,869.89 payable to Rush Truck Center.
Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion?
I'm assuming this truck is on, was part of a capital plan and is on schedule for replacement as.
That's accurate.
Very good, anything else? Any other comments? Very good, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Letter G, Nifty Westlake Corridor Project invoice number 3821. This is part of the additional design and construction cost that, that the council has previously approved. Staff is bringing these invoices to us on it as they get the invoices, so the council's aware, so we can approve these invoices.
Right, and so it can keep track of them. So as we go, just got another one today.
So there is a recommendation in the staff report for the council to consider.
Mr. President, I move to authorize payment of invoice number 3821 to Nifty in the amount of $633,762.21 from the take allocation.
I'll say a question.
Very good, that's more, any discussion?
Just wondering if we can, if you can give a little bit of an update of like where, what percent complete this is or what, is there a status of the station redesign efforts?
So this payment represents about 10% of the amount of funds that were approved by the council. And I would think there, we, we, I missed that meeting unfortunately, but there was a meeting where we reviewed the final architecture, so I think it's.
Specific to the final architecture of both the Ridge Road and the Munster Dyer stations. We did have a follow-up meeting with the Joint Venture as well as CDM Smith and staff at, here at the town, mostly to confirm that their final design reflects substantively the improvements that we required and agreed to, and I am pleased to state that they are. I'm still waiting on the deck that we were presented, so I can share that with you. I think you'd be very happy to see that when we do receive that. I'd be happy to either include it in the weekly report or as a report in the next invoice or report section of the agenda, but certainly should be shared with everybody, it's something we can all be proud of.
And I'll add that one of the items in that number is to do a water main relocation along the elevated section of track in between 45th Street and Fisher because our water main was going to be very, very close to their bridge structures. And so we moved it to, from the east side of the tracks to the west side and we're going to have a lot more room to do any maintenance should we need to back there. And we had a new water main and that's actually been put in the ground and is live, so.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, I think to include it, we, there were, we might, but also to include it in the invoice in a future report. So the public can also take a look at that on the agenda with great, thank you. Okay, so we had a motion, there was a discussion, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to item H, which is the printer maintenance renewal agreement with Pulse Technology. Anything to add from your memory, from your memo, Mr. Tom Manager Anderson?
No.
There is a recommenda, recommendation there. I will be.
I move we authorize Tom Manager to enter international maintenance agreement with Pulse Technology, that early rate not exceed four thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
One second. There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
This, this is the same rate we got last year.
That's correct.
Other questions? Thank you.
Very good. Roll call please.
Counselor Schoon?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes. Letter I, Munster Police Department Squad Card Purchase. Lieutenant Roman, anything else to add from your memo?
No, this is just to start the process. We needed to start earlier than we normally do just because everybody knows, well, shortages. We ordered those, started the ordering last year in November, and we're just getting the cards. So there's, I think, say it's going to continue. So sooner I get this started, sooner we get squat.
I move we authorize Police Department to open the purchasing process for police vehicles. I'll say.
Very good. There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
Will this be adding squad cars to our squad or is it replacing?
Replacing.
Replacing.
Any other questions? Comments? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoon?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes. Lieutenant Roman, you're back up on selling the seized vehicles. Anything to add from your, uh?
None to add specifically. I think everything is in there.
Uh, any other comments or, uh, there is a recommendation for the council to consider?
Mr. President, I move to authorize this firm to sell the two thousand three Chevrolet Silverado.
Second. Move, uh, any discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoon?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes. Are there any reports from the council? Portfolio reports, council? Announcements, our next town council meeting will be September nineteenth. That's a regular Monday town council and redevelopment commission meeting. Uh, seeing there's no, in front of the council, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
What's, what's there meant to be a, a report, a budget update report tonight or is that?
The budget reports were postponed due to our executive session after.
Then I would move for you to adjourn.
Very good. One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then we move into the redevelopment commission meeting. I don't see Mr. Casper.
Mr. Casper will not be available this evening.
Okay. If we're good, we'll, we'll go with the, uh, I'll call the meeting of the Munster Redevelopment Commission, a special meeting on September sixth order. Roll call please.
Commissioner Schoon?
Present.
Commissioner Mellon?
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Present.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Present.
Commissioner Gardner?
Present. Uh, public comment, uh, is there any public here that would like to, uh, speak to the Munster Redevelopment Commission? Seeing none, we'll move on from public comment to the consent agenda. Move we accept the consent agenda as given. I'll second that. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Oh, there's no discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Schoon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Sure.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Gardner, there.
And then we'll go into, there's no old business, no new business, no reports, or are there any announcements? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Redevelopment commission meeting is over. Adjourned.